Budget. I would like to, you know, thank everyone for attending tonight and I want to start by doing a roll call of the committee members. When you hear your name, please say aye. Bob Twitzer.
Aye.
Paul Hart.
Aye.
Aye.
Derek Johnson.
Aye.
Kathy Carrow.
Aye.
Henry Caligari.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Kathy Wolfson.
Aye.
Guinness.
Aye.
Aye.
Chris, did we lose Scott?
Yeah, I think he cut out for just a minute. There he is.
Aye.
Scott, are you there?
I don't think he's there, Chris. Maybe you can do the rest of the roll call.
Sure.
He was on.
All right. I think we left Mr. Heckman, Mr. Heinel. At the end, okay. Mr. Perlo.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
And did we get Mr. McGinnis? Mr. McGinnis, you're here?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that's it. Uh, Madam Chair, hopefully we'll get Scott back there. Scott, are you there?
Yeah, I, I, I think all of a sudden either I pros or everybody else.
Okay, we, uh, we got the full roll, so you can move on from, from there.
Appreciate that. Sorry about that. Uh, tonight we are meeting in a work session. We have a presentation from several departments, the Department of Recreation, Office of Budget and Finance, Property Management, and the Baltimore County Public Library. After each presentation, members of the committee will have an opportunity to ask questions of the presenter. We would like to remind the presenters to please limit your presentations for approximately 15 minutes so we can take questions and move on to the other presentation. Uh, note that there are members of the community in attendance of tonight's meeting. This meeting has not been designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October 15th of last year, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their capital improvement budget. I would now let.
Scott, we can't hear you.
Okay. Pat, why don't you go ahead and start? Are you taking the lead, Pat McDougal?
Uh, yeah, so I'll, I'll share it. Now, Rosalyn is presenting. Okay, everybody see that? Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, awesome. Well, good evening. I'm Rosalyn Johnson. I'm the Director of Recreation and Parks here in Baltimore County, and I'd like to introduce staff that we have on the call tonight. We have Keith Williams, our Chief of Administration, Bob Smith, our Chief of Recreation Services, and of course, the infamous Pat McDougal, who is our planner for our department. And we're happy to be here tonight, and I'd like to thank you, um, Chair Hafford and the Planning Board for inviting us to come in to present. Next slide. Okay, the Department of Recreation and Parks has allocated capital funding on an annual basis through the Parks and Parks Preservation and Greenways Capital Improvement Program, or our CIP. The funding provided in even numbered fiscal years, such as the fiscal year 2022, is typically a larger amount due in part to the Biennial Bond referendum whereby citizens vote on borrowing ordinances in the November elections in even numbered calendar years. Approved borrowing ordinances result in general obligation bond funding being allocated in even fiscal years to use over two, uh, over two fiscal year period. And who we are. So the county's park open space and recreation network is vast and diverse. CIP funding is invested in the purchase of property to service parkland and green space, as well as park development enhancements and renovations at 210 developed parks and leased recreation sites countywide. These include countywide regional community neighborhood and special parks, such as linear greenways and trails, historic sites, and public plazas. More than 3,450 acres of open space and undeveloped, undeveloped parks are scattered through 740 sites. And finally, Parks Preservation and Greenways funding is frequently invested at public schools, which serves as both educational and recreational sites through the joint use agreement with the Board of Education. And while we're on this map, I would like to say that, um, our department has started an effort to undergo geolocating all of our facilities and amenities so that we can have a more comprehensive look. If you look at our county, you can see, um, that our park, park and open space is kind of concentrated in certain areas. So with our geolocation of all of our facilities and amenities, along with the quality of those facilities and amenities, we will better make sure that we are providing an equity lens when we're looking at, um, acquiring additional parkland, park improvements, and building, uh, new facilities and amenities. Thank you, Pat. The pie chart on this, on this slide shows the capital funding sources from the combined fiscal years 2020 and 2021 CIPs, not counting reallocated funding from prior years. The three largest revenue sources were Maryland program open space at about 16 and a half million, debt premium is at about 6.7 million, and county general funds at about 6.3 million. It should be noted that revenue sources such as program open space, state and federal aid, open space waiver revenues, and other or donated funds are budgeted as estimated funding because of the uncertainty of their actual amounts at the time of the CIP formulation. Adjustments are made during each CIP process to seek to keep the budget amounts close to the actual available revenues. It's also important to note that other capital revenues are sometimes expended at parks and recreation sites. Examples include funds for shoreline and stream restoration through the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability, um, as well as funds for trail projects through the Department of Public Works and funds for building renovations through the Office of Property Management. The Parks Preservation and Greenway CIP is broken into seven projects, which are alloc- each allocated revenue that serves as a source for jobs funded through the projects. Individual jobs funded under the projects fit into three general categories: acquisition, park development enhancement and renovation, and then special. Acquisition jobs consist of the purchase of properties to preserve, to service parklands, as well as associated costs, including appraisal, appraisals, title work, and environmental assessments. Park development enhancement and renovation is the broadest category, funding a wide range of jobs from new park design and construction to assorted park and recreation site improvements and enhancements to the renovation of the county's vast inventory of recreational sites, facilities, and amenities. The special category consists of annual funding provided to the nonprofit conservation organization Neighbor Space of Baltimore County, which is legally entitled to a portion of open space waiver revenues as per the county code. That organization utilizes county and other funding to acquire and develop sites to serve as parks within the urban portions of Baltimore County. The next group of slides will display a number of projects where the funding is utilized. Project 301, Recreation and Facility Renovations, is the most catch-all of the Parks Preservation and Greenways Capital Projects and Funds, the broadest range and largest number of individual jobs from year to year. Numerous facility and amenity renovation and repair programs are funded through this project, including those listed on this slide. Most jobs funded through this project range in cost from a few thousand dollars to under a hundred thousand. Some large-scale jobs are sometimes funded as well. Some drainage reservation, renovations in North Point Village Park, multi-purpose court and comfort station renovations at Lenovo Park, path extension and repairs at the Agriculture Resource Center and Farm Park, and security system upgrades at multiple parks are just examples of some program, projects that are funded through this program. Project 302, Athletic Field Construction and Renovation funds both multi-sports athletic fields and ball diamonds. New synthetic turf field construction is funded through this project, as is replacement of synthetic turf fields whose field, whose field surfaces remain functional for about 10 years. Project 307, Community and Neighborhood Park Development funds the majority of park and renovation site development, enhancement and large-scale renovation jobs. Such jobs may take place at community and neighborhood parks, regional and countywide parks, or even at school recreation centers and other various recreation sites. The fiscal year 2020 and 2021 capital funding approved by the county executive, county council, and planning board for this project is nearly double the amount funded in the four-year period between fiscal years 2016 and 2019. This has enabled the Department of Recreation and Parks to work with the Office of Property Management to initiate a variety of exciting new projects. Um, for example, uh, we have the 30% design plan for Middle River Community Powell Center at Glenmar Elementary School Recreation Center, which is presently under design, as is its sister, Rosedale Community Powell Center at McCormick Elementary. Um, we also have a picture of Raydabaw Park in Tulsa, and then Lock Raven Fishing Center, where a major deck and pier rehabilitation project is under design. And this is probably one of our, um, most exciting slides. If you look over to the right-hand side, what you will see is our newest, um, baby. I'll say they're all our babies and we do love them equally. But, um, we have, uh, planned a new destination playground at Northwest Regional Park in Owens Mills, and, uh, the design has started, but it'll be the first of its kind, and it's a destination playground because the idea is for parents, um, or guardians to bring youth there, and they'll spend a larger amount of time there. This is made possible through a generous donation from the Baltimore Ravens. They have contributed $500,000 towards this project. We have $300,000 from program open space and, um, $50,000 from transfer fees. So we are very excited about this project. Um, and then there are various other community and neighborhood park development projects as well. And this slide, um, shows a lot of our projects. If you look at the left-hand side, that's one of our challenges that we have, and that's Cromwell Valley Park. Um, if anyone has visited Cromwell Valley, it is bursting at the seams. During the COVID-19 pandemic, we have seen the largest increase in park usership in the state, where we have a 223% increase in park usership throughout all of our parks. So parking has really created a challenge for us at Cromwell Valley, and so that's one of the, um, the projects that's in design phase where we will look at redesigning parking and adding additional parking to that location. Project 309, Greenway Stream Valleys and Trails Development funds a variety of typically large-scale trail and path construction and rehabilitation jobs, while the Department of Public Works has capital funding that is dedicated to pedestrian and bicycle access jobs that predominantly improve overall access. The majority of jobs funded under this project are for trails and paths that are recreational in nature. One large rehabilitation job is being funded within the present capital budget to perform major renovations to the one-mile-long Milford Mill Trail at Villanova Park. The job may include rerouting as a result of erosion along the adjacent Gwen's Falls. Project 601 is park and recreation facility acquisition. Approximately a dozen properties were acquired from calendar year 2015 through 2020, with at least one acquisition in each of the seven county council districts. The county's acquisition side of program open space revenues, which typically account for more than 90% of the park acquisition budget, has built up to nearly 13 million in unexpended funding as a fiscal year 2021 POS allocation. County Exec Johnny Osheski has made a priority of aggressively pursuing additional prospective acquisitions with a particular emphasis on acquiring properties to meet known recreational needs and to help fulfill the goal of providing equitable recreation opportunities countywide. One property was acquired in calendar year 2020, and that's the 7.7 Green, Greens Lane property to the rear of the Randalls Town Community Center. An acquisition of this site supports the recommendations developed from public input provided within the Liberty Road Corner Study. At present, there are eight active park acquisition projects underway, as well as three additional properties that may be pursued if funding allows. Contract agreements on four such acquisition projects involves more than 7.6 million in POS funding, and, uh, soon we may be submitting it to the county council for approval. So we have been extremely busy, and that's pretty much an understatement. And now I would like to present with you, uh, present to you our Department of Recreation and Parks Proposed Fiscal Year 2022 Capital Improvement Program. The proposed CIP includes funding to continue projects that began or will commence in the present fiscal year, as well as funding for new or expanded jobs. The presently proposed CIP, as per direction from the Office of Budget and Finance, does not assume unprogrammed general funds for the fiscal years 2022 and 2023, thus following the fiscal year 2021 CIP's allocation of no general funds. Additional tier requests are being prepared for consideration, including additional proposed capital jobs. The agency CIP proposal includes an expansion of funding and a number of facility renovation and replacement programs to address a growing list of deteriorated or deferred maintenance, um, that has occurred with our facilities and they're in dire need of attention. I would be remiss if I did not express my gratitude to the Planning Board, the County Council, and County Executive Johnny Osheski for putting forward a record Parks Preservation and Greenways borrowing ordinance of $35 million in November's election, an amount nearly nine times larger than the amount traditionally requested for past park and recreation capital improvement programs. The voters spoke loud and clear on their support for the ordinance, which at an 82.1% approval rating was tied for second highest behind only Waterway Improvement Program. And so at a time when the COVID pandemic dominated the news and daily life and led so many economic, led to so many economic concerns, the voter support for Parks Preservation and Greenways borrowing ordinance reinforced how essential the park system is to the public. And while 35 million might seem like a large amount, when our team went through and determined how much we needed, we quickly came up with about $87 million, uh, worth of expenses. So we do have our work cut out for us. Uh, throughout the following series of slides, the proposed jobs will be described with additional information provided where appropriate on how the jobs support or take into account sustainability and resiliency and matters such as climate change and sea level rise. At present, in the agency's CIP template, the Department of Recreation and Parks firmly believes that parks and recreation sites and facilities also impact a less well-recognized form of resiliency, and that's of community and human resiliency. During the COVID pandemic, this was proven out by massive increases in our park visitation, as mentioned earlier, and as citizens and visitors to the county descended upon our sites in droves from mostly socially-distanced escapes and the stress, from the stresses of COVID. The county's diverse and extensive park system was integral to the mental and physical well-being of countless individuals. A total of seven, $7 million is requested for Project 3, 301 Recreation Facility Renovations, which combined with reallocated or estimated carryover funding would amount to a budget of approximately 7.6 million. Two key rehabilitation programs are proposed for expansion within this project. One for the renovation of tennis and multi-purpose courts, and the other for playground renovation and replacements with a budget of $2 million each. $1 million for each of the two, next two fiscal years. There are too many courts that are in similar state to the one pictured in the lower left-hand corner. Um, and individual renovation jobs, uh, can range from tens of thousands of dollars to more than 200,000. The county's last comprehensive playground program began in the mid-1990s, um, and was completed around 2003, and it's time to invest in a new cycle of playground replacements. $325,000 was budgeted within fiscal year 2021 CIP to start the replacement program, but a greater annual investment is required to make significant progress. Another 3.6 million is proposed for a wide range of other jobs that this project funds, based on an annual need of about 1.8 million per year. A gradual increase in funding for both renovation programs and the miscellaneous jobs is proposed for the out-years of the budget. A total of 3.3 and a half million is budgeted for various jobs funded through Project 302 Athletic Field Construction and Renovation. This includes 1.6 million for the Ball Diamond D Lipping Program, 1.2 million for large-scale athletic field and ball diamond refurbishment, 300,000 for backstop safety fence and player bench renovations, and 250,000 for miscellaneous other needs associated with diamonds and fields. In terms of out-year budgets, gradual increases are proposed for miscellaneous needs and for backstop safety fencing and player bench renovations. Just under 23 million is budgeted within Project 307, Community and Neighborhood Park Development. This includes construction phase funding for two jobs whose design phases are funded within the fiscal year 2021 CIP. 6.4 million for the first phase of park development at Belfast Road Park Site, 6.4 million to address some of the park enhancements and renovation priorities to be identified within the upcoming Oregon Ridge Master Plan, 1.6 million to fund additional destination playgrounds, 500,000 for a comprehensive agency-wide master plan, and our last master plan that we can locate was from 1950, which was a very good year, however, it was 70 years ago. Um, 500, uh, let's see, 880,000 for miscellaneous park improvements, and additionally, 5.8 million is requested to initiate a comprehensive targeted park enhancement and renovation program that will focus upon older neighborhood and community parks that are in need of revitalization. One such job is expected to take place at Diamond Ridge Park to address input received from the public through the CIP process and other means. And last but not least, um, our Greenway Streams Valleys and Trails Development, and we, um, have budgeted 1.73 million to be expended over two fiscal years for various trail projects to include trail or path constructions, enhancements, and renovations. And with that being said, I would like to thank you for your support, and we will entertain any questions or feedback you may have.
Ms. Johnson, um, this is Derek Johnson. I have a question, a couple of questions to ask. Um, you mentioned a geolocating, um, system. Um, how, how far along are you with that? And my second question is, you mentioned, um, the development of new parks throughout the county. How and how much input, um, are residents given, or what's the, just a brief synopsis of what that process may be? And I also want to say I thank you for such a great, um, presentation. Very informative.
You're welcome, and thank you very much. So the answer to your first question, geolocating, we are a lot further along than we have been in the past. I'll say that. Uh, we've met with, uh, the Office of Information and Technology, and they are in the process of tweaking the program and enabling it so we will be able to send our staff out. We anticipate that they will be, have completed that process in about a month and a week. We were at a month and a half, a week ago when we met. So in about a month and a week, we'll be ready to hit the road, um, dispense our, uh, send our staff out to locations with smartphones or, um, smart devices that are connected to Wi-Fi, and they will actually be able to geolocate everything down to trash cans and benches. And we want to know if it's in excellent, good, fair, or poor condition. So we're in the process of working with OIT. Then we're developing a definition database so that we know everything we want to look at, including our storyboard, storybook trails. Um, and then we will be able to, at the drop of a hat, sit at our, at our desks or sit, you know, at our teleworking locations and be able to look and determine, um, what we have and where we need to focus, um, our interests on. It will also be able to, um, allow us to upload our warranty information. The taxpayers have a huge investment they're making into the amenities that they own, and so we want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the dollar and, um, have a tickler file when the warranties will expire. Um, so that's the geolocation piece. And then the second part of your question was about, um, how we determine where new parks are. So it depends. Um, we just actually met probably about an hour and a half ago about a request for a new park to see if we were interested in acquiring it. So it comes from all different directions. It could come from community members. It could come from property owners. It could come from a phone call to the county executive of someone who's looking to sell their property. Um, or it could just be a property that real estate will say, hey, this property just came up. Are you all interested? And traditionally, what will happen is our team will meet. We will look at where it's located. We'll look at needs. We'll talk to our Rec and Nature Councils to see if there's an interest, um, for additional property at that location and see how it folds into our future plans. Um, that's how we currently do it. Uh, one of the things I neglected to mention is that we are getting ready to kick off, um, accreditation. We're working with the Commission on Accredited Parks and Recreation Agencies, and that has about 170 standards for excellence in, in parks and recreation. And it's the best audit for us to do for our department while we're benchmarking standards, and so there's certain standards that will go along with that. We also believe that the master planning, the countywide master planning process that we're undergoing will tell us where we're negative, park land, um, how far, uh, residents should live from a park, so that will, um, give us some more informed metrics and goals that we can go by. But right now, it's coming at us pretty much from all different directions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Has there been a permit, um, manager hired out of the Ag Center?
Yes, we do have a farm manager that was hired. Um, her name is Gina Porter, and she's been here, um, my COVID years are getting thrown off, uh, but she's been here probably about six months now, um, and she is an excellent addition to our team. Um, our team out there, as well as Mark and many of our other partners out there have been really impressed, uh, with her knowledge and her ability to be able to work with everyone.
All right, one more question. Has there been any effort to acquire some land for recreation and high school use near Hafford High School?
Absolutely, Mr. McGinnis. I'll never forget when I met with you, what, was it two weeks after, um, after the planning board meeting that we had? I feel like maybe it was the same week. Um, so we have been looking at, um, land to actually acquire for, um, for recreational use in the Hafford Zone. We have not been 100% successful as far as that's concerned, um, but we are still looking, and we're working with the council member as well, um, in helping to identify, um, land which we could acquire.
Yeah, and I would remind, closer to this than Hafford High School, it would help to augment their, uh, program also.
We agree wholeheartedly, but at this point, it's so landlocked and we're having a hard time finding land that, um, that would be if we had our druthers, but we are looking for, um, any land that's available while we do have this acquisition, um, funding to be able to purchase land in the Hafford Zone.
Yeah, there's always land available, or you just have to, uh, somebody has to close the deal.
Well, we've been working, and the county executive has been, um, really, really, um, shepherding this process along. Uh, up until about a month ago, we were meeting every, was it every week, Pat? It felt like every day, but we were meeting every week to give updates um, on our program open space acquisitions. So you're absolutely right, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you.
Mr. McGinnis, one of the other challenges that we've had in northern Baltimore County is the number of properties that are preserved through the agricultural land preservation program, which, believe it or not, kind of shuts us out and doesn't allow us to do, uh, construction of even fields, even athletic fields and things of that nature.
There's some right adjacent to the high school, what I'm thinking about.
If I could jump in, Mr. McGinnis, um, we, we have now preserved close to 8,000 acres of land um, that the county taxpayers have paid for. Um, have you looked at utilizing that land for parks and recs? I mean, we should have full access to that land, as I see it, because we own it, so.
No, you don't own it. You, uh, you purchased the rights, development rights.
And that's what Pat was speaking to, um, where that recreational use does not count.
Well, that, that, I think that's what we need to look at. I mean, if we're gonna preserve more land, we paid for the rights to all that land. I think we should be able to have access to that land, so.
That's.
Eighty, eighty thousand acres is a lot of land, so.
For development rights, not the rights to the land.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
If you're not able to develop, then it's, then, and we paid for it, then we should have access to it, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, most of the agricultural land preservation programs do not, um, uh, allow for or guarantee any form of public access whatsoever. Um, and, you know, and they, they don't pay full market value for the property. Instead, it's, it's a rate that's just for preservation purposes. And, uh, actually, the county, I don't know if there'll be a presentation for Ag Pres coming up, but, um,
It was.
One of the most successful programs in, in the state of Maryland and kind of, uh, highlighted all the time and lauded across the, uh, the state. uh, highlighted all the time and lauded across the, uh, the state and the country, actually. But it, it does have that unfortunate, uh, you know, downside of, um, not allowing for those, um, you know, for recreational development.
I, I would argue that if the taxpayers are paying, they should have access. I think that, that's a we've preserved 80,000 or close to 80,000 acres of the total 258,000 acres, which are one-third of the acres outside the Urdo, which makes up two-thirds of the whole county. So it's a huge portion of the county that we've locked up and paid money for that we can't utilize.
You're under 75. Yeah.
And we hear you, Mr. Warren. However, that is beyond our decision-making ability. Um, so, um, that's something that we are not in control of.
Um, Ms. Johnson, um, this is Kathy Wolfson from District Four. And I would like to thank you for including and specifying Diamond Ridge improvements in your budget. Um, I'm sure they've shared the pictures I took, um, of, of that facility with you all. Um, what is the timeline for replacement of those steps and, um, sidewalk and bridge for that facility?
You're welcome. Absolutely, and thank you. And I'll defer to Pat McDougall, who is our keeper of all things timeline wise.
Yeah, so, uh, with it being fiscal year 22 funding, we, we do want to tackle that, um, early in the fiscal year. So we're gonna work together with our partners at, uh, Property Management. I know Ms. Shindel is on, on this call as well. Um, and we're going to try to expedite that because we, we've definitely been receiving a lot of community input related to, to that and then restoring the access. Um, there have been staff that have gone out there. Um, I know that you, you personally have gone out there and, and thank you for forwarding those, those photos. Because we also know that some of the overlooks, uh, need repair as well. So, uh, we're, we're really looking forward to do, doing that as one of the first um, comprehensive renovation program projects under Project 307.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, and I think this is an appropriate time for me to shout out Deb Shindel, Property Management, and, um, Ed Blades at Budget and Finance. We have been keeping them very busy, or they've been keeping us very busy. I'm not sure which one. But, um, the level of collaboration, um, and their openness to kind of adapt to some changing ways has just been bar none. So without them, we wouldn't be as far along as we are. So we thank them for all of their help, all of their input, all their guidance and their partnership.
Absolutely welcome. Thank you so very much. That was a wonderful presentation.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have, uh, just one more question, uh, Scott, if you will. Um, and this.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. I, um, this, uh, great presentation, Ms. Johnson. I appreciate it. My question, however, may be for Mr. McDougall or Mr. Blades. The, the figures that you're citing in the presentation do not jive with any of the numbers that I'm looking at for the appropriation summary. Um, and the second part of the question, and I don't know how to reconcile that, and I may be reading it wrong. Um, and then the second part of the question is the 35 million that was, um, passed, uh, last November. Are those incorporated in the future budget numbers, or those have yet to be allocated?
I, I can, uh, answer those, uh, Ed, if, if you're okay with that.
Sure, Dad, thanks.
Okay, so what you see in the, uh, CIP template, as we call it, that's gonna include not only the, the new funding that would be coming our way in fiscal year 22. It'll also carry over what the current projection is um, as a carryover from existing fiscal year 21 funding. Uh, so lots of moving numbers, so, you know, just, just bear that in mind. And, and a lot of these numbers are moving targets, especially when it comes to program open space and the state capital grant funding. Um, as we go through the legislature, we, we don't know quite yet what those numbers will be. And the capital pro- capital budget gets refunded, you know, through the whole process to really, uh, account for, for those types of things. And yes, the $35 million is entirely plugged into this. Um, that was used a couple of different things in Project 301. Uh, really, uh, buffing that up for the playground pla- program and the court renovation program, um, which really weren't funded at that level before. And then the majority of it is invested in a Project 307, which really covers the, the larger projects that we're doing. Um, so does that answer your question well enough?
That, that does. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Heckman, if I could just add that when we are preparing for the, um, fiscal year, we basically roll the budget over. So we roll, you know, each fiscal year over. When you look at a capital budget page, you see six years. You had, so you see the capital budget and the five-year CIP, so we roll everything. And based on your comment, I have a concern that we might have missed some of the adjustments that Reckon Parks is putting into place and may have to update and send a revised, uh, copy over to the planning board if, uh, we're not in line with, with what the, uh, Reckon Parks has presented.
Yeah, there were a couple that were a few million dollars off, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll fix that and get that to you.
Thanks for picking up on that. Um, any other questions for any of them? Then again, thank you very much for the presentation and the rest of your staff. Uh, we will now turn, I'd like to invite Ms. Deborah, uh, Shindel from Property Management to talk about some of the other properties of the county.
Thank you, everyone. Um, we appreciate your time this evening. Um, I'd like to also introduce some of the folks that are, uh, here representing, uh, OBF and, uh, Property Management. Uh, my director, Mr. Ed Blades, um, who is the OBF Director, Nicole Finney-Frock, who is Assistant County Property Manager, and Kat Stice, who is our Office Administrator. Um, I also want to express that I have the great privilege of working with many, um, agencies and all agencies, I should say, um, in the general government, um, throughout the general government. And so we also have here with us today to also help answer some of your questions um, is Police Chief Hyatt, Fire Chief Rudd, um, obviously Reckon Parks Director, uh, Ms. Johnson, um, Director Laura Riley from the Department of Aging, James Cook, who obviously is from Library, and will be also doing his presentation. And then we also, um, represent the Detention Center. So that's kind of what's unique about Property Management. We, um, have that great pleasure of working with many, uh, of the agencies as a general service, uh, agency. Um, Chris, could you please pull up the, um, presentation that we have? For some reason, my share button is not working. So thank you very, everyone. Um, so we too would like to do a presentation for you, a little bit about Property Management through the Office of Budget and Finance and what we are planning globally, um, throughout the county. So, Chris, if you could flip the page. Um, first, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Property Management. Uh, we provide services to constituents in all agencies within the county. So we provide custodial services, grounds maintenance services, building maintenance services, capital projects or enhancements, and lease management. You can turn the page. Thank you. Um, how these projects are selected. First, what we do is really a collaborative effort with each agency. Um, we are targeted here at Property Management, really looking at the systems and the equipment and the operating of each facility. So we really focus on what kind of air conditioning system we have. Do we have any issues? How old is it? How old are the boilers, the chillers, and things like that? We kind of make a comprehensive list, and we keep track of all of those, um, assets in the actual building. Then we meet with each agency individually, and we kind of collaborate together. We say, you know, we really, these are our priority buildings and what we need to take care of this year as far as maintenance-wise. And then they actually come to us and say, here's what we need for programming. And then the last step for us is that Property Management and OBF will work with the agency to make a collaborative, um, list so that it incorporates both of our priorities. So we try to make it as comprehensive as we can, taking into consideration everyone's needs.
I may could turn the background noise off.
Yeah.
Yes, give me one second. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Chris, my guess is Pat McDougall doesn't know he's unmuted.
Yeah, let me check on him. Sorry about that.
Apologies.
Chris, Mr. McDougall, no. Just kidding.
Okay, we should be all gesset.
Thank you so much. You may turn the page. Criteria that are taken into consideration. Um, we do look at the master plan. We use the guidelines for that and as the amendments come forth. And then the next step we do is sustainability. We try to look at the Smart Growth Initiative, the, uh, projects that will really enhance the environment. We take into consider the climate action, and we are, um, really working towards reducing the, um, carbon footprint of the county as a whole. We look at communities. So we look at the health and the public safety aspect of each community and what their needs are. And what the, we try to enhance every community, and you will see some of those examples as we go through this presentation. We try to reduce, um, operating budgets. So I tell folks all the time that, um, in a normal setting, with all of the over 150 buildings that we own, a lot of our operating systems are 50 years or older. So we really have a challenge here in Baltimore County to keep up with, um, balancing how much money we are spending to do those emergency repairs and how much we are spending to really replace equipment long because they're far exceeded their life expectancy. So that is a balance for us, um, that we are ongoing and working on. And then, of course, we also have to look at any federal and state mandates, repairs and replacements, and systematic replacement strategy. So that, what that means is if we know we're gonna go and replace a roof, does it make sense then to change out all of the air handler units or the rooftop units at that time because we're already disturbing that roof? And so it might be better for us systematically to change all of the equipment at one time rather than just doing one particular project at a time and then having to come back and disturb it and really go into the warranty issue of, of that. And finally, um, the last button is the time. Um, the appropriate timing and coordination. So obviously, what happens many, like many projects, um, as the emergencies come in, uh, we obviously take care of the emergencies and the unforeseen things, and that will often kick back some of the projects we wanted to until the next fiscal year or even maybe two or three years. Um, I will say the county has, quite frankly, kicked the, kicked down the can a little too far this time. And everybody has done it in the last 20 years, but it's finally starting to catch us. And, and we really have been trying to be aggressive to change, uh, and update a lot of our older equipment. Chris, you can turn. Thank you. So the capital projects that were completed this fiscal year so far, um, in FY '21 are 95 projects that we have completed. We currently have an additional 150 projects that we are working on that were, um, customer requests, that we worked with the agencies to repair the things that they would like us to actually repair. And so the total estimated projects that we we hope to accomplish this year is 245 total capital projects just in this fiscal FY '21 year. The types of capital projects completed, uh, fiscal year, out of the 245, what we try to do is keep track of how many renovations we do, how much replacement we're doing versus new construction or new install. So as you can see, as we go around the pie chart, 55, uh, work orders have been repairs and replacement of equipment. New construction or new installs have been 49 jobs. Five jobs where we're working on our studies or actual designs, we're in design concept, not construction, or we're in the study. Can it, is it feasible? We actually demoed two, um, buildings this year. Um, furniture and office moves, we made 23 of those. And renovations, we will have done 111. So it kind of gives you a full spectrum of, of what we do to capture, you know, what goes into that capital funding and what types of projects do get charged to there. You can turn the page, Chris. Thank you. The history of the expenditures. So it's really important, um, as we look at what we call, um, 1036, which is our new building repair renovation and minor, um, additions. In 2020, we have $17,613,205. In 2019, as you can see, we almost spent 25 million. 2018, we had a, a good year, and we, um, actually made some headway and had 30 million that we spent out of this fund. In '17, it was 27 million. And in '16, we had our highest, uh, rate of funding, which is 34,355, $265. So as you can see, there's not a whole lot of money that is in the pot for us to maintain and replace and also build for construction. And that's why we always are advocating for complete funding for this particular, um, project so that we can keep and maintain the facilities we need to. You can turn it, Chris. Thank you. Some of the capital projects that we worked on this year, and we really did have a great time, uh, working with all the different agencies. Um, at E Senior Center, we are replacing the, um, heating system, the radiators, the pipes, and the split systems. The project is currently in progress, and the estimated completion time is gonna be August of '21. And as you can see, it's a million three that we are, uh, putting into that particular replacement. The fire stations. We are in Phase One of putting extractors and dryer installations in all of our, um, fire stations. Uh, we are currently in progress, and for Phase One, and I have to mention, there are three phases that will go out in the next following years, but right now we're doing Phase One. Um, we should be complete of all the ones listed by December of this, uh, '21. Westview Fire Station. So in the last couple of years, we put a lot of emphasis, um, because the Fire, uh, Committee has come to us and said that we really wanted to revamp fire, uh, women's locker rooms. Um, and so we've been each year picking a locker room to design and then one to complete the construction. This year, um, it is Westview Fire. And it's currently in progress, and it will be completed November of '21. So it's in design now, and then we'll go into construction. We're also working on the pistol range. It's a new, uh, installing a new indoor mechanical target system and bullet trap. And that's a $1.2 million project. Uh, what was happening before is that with all of the shooting and training that they do, it starts deteriorating, um, the actual mechanisms, the cells that retrieve the bullet trap, and also becomes unsafe, and you get the backlashing of the bullets. So we should be completed, um, February of '21 so that the police will have a new indoor system to use in a safe manner. Seven Oaks Senior Center. So we've heard a lot about, um, at the last planning meeting with the community, is that they really advocated for, um, an expansion of the senior center parking lot at Seven Oaks. We were able to work with the Board of Education and kind of take the existing parking lot that the senior center is in now and expand it towards the school's parking lot. And we had a really great, we're having a really great partnership and relationship with them. with them. The project is in design phase now and we hope to have it complete by November of '21. So we're very excited about this project and actually it was one that was very brought up in the planning and, and we heard it loud and clear. So AGING was, was very responsive. Another project that we worked on for the police is installing the new fume hoods in the forensic lab. It actually is almost complete. I had a meeting today in regards to the project and it's a $35,000 project that will really help the police in everything that they do in that forensic lab to make sure that their testing is the state of the art and safe. We also are in, working with the police on Wilkins Police Precinct. We are identifying and designing, identifying land currently and trying to design a floor plan for the new building. We currently are in design phase and obviously still in land acquisition mode, trying to find land. So the design is not complete yet, but as we get further along, we'll be able to provide more and more information. Cockeysville and Fleming Senior Center, we heard our citizens loud and clear also, they really wanted us to do a study on those parking lots to determine whether it was feasible to add additional parking for the seniors in those two locations. And so we're currently in the phase of identifying the feasibility and also working with the other user agencies in the facility like Wreck and Parks so that we try to minimize any impact to their programming. The Police Department made a great effort and I was very proud to be part of this, is the Special Victims Unit. They actually went in and renovated the interview rooms in the Public Safety Building. The project was completed in September of '20 and their whole target with this $145,000, they really worked with a nonprofit organization that really can identify with sexual assault victims and they wanted to make them come into a space where they feel, where they felt safe and they felt like they could really had, tell their story, but not in a, a very sterile environment with a, you know, where they were much more relaxed and after a traumatic experience. So that was a really great project to work on. And then Northeast Regional Rec Center, we replaced the split system at that location and that project is complete, it was completed, excuse me, in May of 2020. FY '21, this is an exciting project also when we really look at the community, is the Woodlawn Health and WIC Center. So we have an existing Woodlawn WIC Center and a Woodlawn Health Center, but they are not, and they're not together. And so we really have outgrown, Health Department came and they, they expressed that they've really have outgrown their space and they're, they need more exam rooms for their clients in this community. And so we were able to find a location that will bring these two resources, the Health Department and the WIC Center together so that these customers can get service that is provided like every equality throughout the county because this was the only location where they were not together, that WIC was somewhere else and not with the Health, Health Center. So we were able to give them additional space to provide the services they need and in addition to bringing those services together. We currently are in construction mode on that and we are expected to be completed May of '21. The Detention Center, we are currently working on the parking, the paving, parking and garage repairs. We are in progress and we hope to be complete the, all phases by September of '21. And last but not least, I do believe this is for FY '21, is the Woodlawn and Jacksonville Senior Centers. We are in the, of, currently looking for expanding the feasibility to see if it's possible to take the existing sites that they are on and expand them to meet the needs of their aging population. We are currently in that, so we're doing the study and we hope to have more information probably around May. We're, we're working with Wreck and Parks and working with AGING to really look at the property and how it functions and how we could get more land, more user space out of it. Moving ahead to FY '22. Essex Police Precincts, we are slated to do a complete mechanical upgrade design where we will go into the facility and completely redesign all of the mechanical systems and bring them up to current. Fire stations, we're going to be working on their Phase Two Fire Station Extractor installations, so we'll keep that project moving as the commitment that we have made to our fire staff. You can go ahead, Chris. Thank you. We are also going to renovate, in fire stations, renovate buildings to build unisex locker rooms. And so as we move forward, we're not just going to look at the ladies, the women's locker room, but we want to look at globally creating unisex locker rooms with individual bathroom and shower stalls. We think it's much more functional and much more meeting the needs of, of the fire station of today. Parkville Senior Center, we're going to be looking at the parking lot reconfiguration and see if we could lay that out a little bit better for the, for the citizens that attend both AGING and WRECK to try to get them closer and more parking to that center. Catonsville Senior Center, we're going to replace the boiler and pumping controls. And at E's Senior Center, we're working with AGING to replace the carpet and doing some painting, the facility to kind of make it look a little bit more modern. Any additional capital projects that we're working on? Obviously, we're presented to you by Wreck and Parks and I will let libraries speak for themselves. Thank you for your time. We are glad to take any of your questions and like I said, I'm not only here, but we have representatives from each agency so that they can provide more information to you also. So thank you.
Deborah, it's Kathy Wolfson and I did want to thank you for following through with Woodlawn Senior Center. They've been coming to us for the past several years and really know how much they'll appreciate being taken seriously with the study.
Great. Laura Riley was a true advocate for that and I couldn't work with a better partner.
Great.
I want to, want to follow on that too. I think that it's not just the senior center, but the youth athletic activities there and it's adjacent to the police station that's there. So if we're going to move that police station, maybe the ability to expand onto that property. So, you know, anything you can do there would be greatly appreciated to get a lot out of that small square footage. So again.
Absolutely, sir.
This is Derek Johnson, just another question for you. When you, when we, I saw that the renovation budget was the majority of what, what you do. Is there any money, extra money allocated for that since you seem to do a lot more of the renovations than anything else?
So no, sir. It all comes out of the same pot of money. So we have to together work with our sister agencies and really make a decision on, you know, where our priorities are and collaborate, collaborate in any way we can to get as much as we can done together. Ed, is there something else that you wanted to add to that because I don't know if Mr. Blades had any other information, but.
Well, I'll say, you know, the other night we were talking about the technology fund, enhancements through technology, which our internal slang is tech fund. Our internal slang for Project 210 P36 is 1036. And from a budget standpoint, we really don't know until we're at the end of the budget process how much we have available as far as general funds. Ross Johnson said, mentioned, made the comment that I couldn't tell her as far as adding or making any additional revenue fund, or general funds available in her budget request. Same thing here with our buildings. It's the last spot that if we do have general fund money available to increase 1036, that's where I put it because you saw from the spending history, we can spend 30 to 35, 25 to 35 million a year in that area and for FY '22, I believe we have 14 to 15 million program. So this is a large need in the county and it's usually the last thing to be touched in the budget process.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
And Deb, you didn't toot your horn well enough, I'm telling you, because I've had the pleasure to work with you for many, many years and you support a lot of community events that bring millions of dollars and hundreds of thousands of visitors into Baltimore County. And we appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I like to be behind the scene. I tell everybody that. I don't want to be in the forefront. I just want to support everybody else quietly.
I know where to find you.
Yes, you do.
In the Hereford Zone, early on, there was talk of putting the senior center right next to the library on the lot of joining it, right in downtown Hereford. Has any thought to further on that, where it would benefit both the library and the senior center?
So originally, as you know, we put the new parking lot there to, to help. The original thought, I think, from the community was, hey, could we put a senior center right behind that parking lot? Unfortunately, we cannot because that is where the septic is and so we can't touch any of that. That's inhabitable. You can't, can't. So we don't have any, we're landlocked now. We have no, on that particular property, we have no additional space to add for a very large, nice senior center, although we would love to, but we are.
But that back part could be part of the parking lot though, right? And if you had the structure next to the library itself, you would, you would lose any ground that way.
I'm not, are you talking about where the new parking lot is right behind it?
No, the one beside it, the lot beside it.
Behind the building, the existing building?
No, it's right beside the existing library lot on York Road.
Right, you're talking about the grass area in the back where that's where the septic tank is.
Yeah, that's where the septic is.
No?
Front part of that. I know the lot because my brother-in-law sold it to a year.
But where we demoed the lot?
Tour out there.
On, there's a, there is a lot next to the library. There's a front and a back. The back is where they have some of the septic system, but in the front, next to the, exactly next to the library, why couldn't that be used and not take up so much parking space?
We designed that so that people could come through and, and do, use that for parking. Are you saying now take that parking lot and put a building on it?
Well, I'm just saying that had there been any consideration, because there seemed to be plenty of room there on that lot for a structure and parking.
Unfortunately, the septic was an issue because not only can you not go back further, but then you have to have the room to expand your septic. So we couldn't go any further back to where I know where, in the grass area, and we couldn't go any further to the right because of the swale and the, and where the fire pump station is. If you, there's a little brick building back there that we could not move because that's the sprinkler system. So that had to stay there.
Okay, I don't want to take up any more time. That's all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? I'm curious, with the change in retail, to what degree is the, like I saw the, the Woodlawn Health Center was using security mall space, to what degree are we reusing some old, you know, older retail spaces that are no longer as viable?
So that's kind of one of the things that we have, and are having conversation with internally as we look for additional land. We are looking at, say for instance, if we're looking to put a new police station in, we work very closely with the agency to determine their service area and then we start looking around. And if there are spaces that, like you said, are old, old malls or maybe up for sale and we talk to the county real estate department and ask them whether they're comfortable approaching the owner and whether they're willing to, you know, either sell the property or allow us to move in. So there is a lot of conversation when we go looking for land or leases that we try to work for as an individual community has its needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Shindel?
I have one quick question. Hopefully, it's a quick question. The Wilkins Police Precinct, why does it need to be relocated and where exactly are you looking? Do you have particular properties in mind?
So that's a very good question. Thank you, Katie, because we have tossed this idea around. So in the world of practicality, what we would have to do if we choose not, if we decide to stay on the existing property and we want to demo it, we have to completely move the whole precinct. And if, if you, if you hear me talking about the catchment areas, so we have to work very closely with the police, with the fire department and the police department to say, what are your catchment areas? Where do you need to be as a hub because these are the service areas that you overlap? So we have been working with them to identify how far out we could look for property. And so it is our first thought that rather than spending two or three million dollars renting something and outfitting it for a police precinct, it would behoove us to first look at actual where their catchment areas are, where could they, where does it make sense that they could be and how far out they could be to where they are now? And are there any available properties? And so that is what we are currently doing because it, in our minds, we prefer to spend $3 million not on a renovation where we're going to stay until we build a new building, but buying another piece of property. It is a major, major process to move something like a fire station or a police station, the way they operate and taking that whole operation and shutting it down.
Chief Hyatt, did you want to jump in on any of the building's deficiencies?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. You know, I would say Wilkins Police Precinct, out of our police department properties is, you know, without question, the, probably the, the oldest and really honestly in the worst condition. On top of that, the, the growth that the precinct, the, the police precinct has had with staffing, it's just, it's really outsized the, the structure itself. So there are a lot of deficiencies that we're dealing with there.
Makes perfect sense. Very similar to what we, what the county did with the Towson Fire Station.
Sure, wasn't that built recently though, within the last 15 years?
The Towson Fire Station?
The Woodlawn Fire.
No, Wilkins Precinct is really old. It's, it's very old.
So for 25 years old, I do believe.
Precinct one, Wilkins.
I, I thought it was, I lived there, the first district, was remodeled or something recently within the last, I've only lived here 22 years, so it's been since that, so.
They may have put a roof on, they were talking about putting a roof on, but it had, there's been no major renovations. And the way the, the precinct is compartmentalized from an officer safety standpoint, it's difficult for, for the processing of the prisoners and there's no Sally Port as far as bringing prisoners into the back. There's no secure facility to bring prisoners in without potential escapes. So it's definitely in need of a, a new precinct.
Well, I'm okay with moving it and building a new one. Obviously, I want the best police in my neighborhood, but, you know, I just, if we build something new, we should look to build something that is going to last more than 20 years.
Okay, given the time, any last questions? If that's the case, I'd now like to invite Mr. James Cook to present on the Baltimore County Public Library's request.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I am James Cook. I'm the Assistant Director for the Baltimore County Public Library. I am here tonight representing the library on behalf of our new director, Sonia Alcantara Antoine, who actually begins work on Monday, February 1st. Sonia Alcantara Antoine, who actually begins work on Monday, February 1st. Our previous director, Paula Miller, retired late this past summer. So we're excited to welcome a new director. So I'm pinch hitting for her tonight. So thank you very much. I want to talk a little bit about our capital program for the next several years. But first, I'd like to, again, as others have done this evening, extend my gratitude and sincere appreciation to Ed Blades and the Office of Budget and Finance and to Deb Shindel from Property Management for all the wonderful collaboration and support with the library over the years in maintaining and improving our 19 facilities. So thank you very much. It means a lot to us and to all of our communities. Our library system has been in existence for many years and has been an important part of Baltimore County communities. We believe, as everyone here does, I'm sure, that libraries tremendously enhance all of our communities. Our goal in our capital program has always been and continues to be to create beautiful, flexible, safe, and creative spaces. Spaces that inspire, spaces that make our communities proud, and spaces that are designed for 21st century library uses, which run the gamut from picking up materials to doing research, to needing a place to work, a temporary office, a place to study, a place to tutor, a place for social events, a place for picking up meals. You name it, we are doing it in public libraries today. Just a little about our level of business. We do have 19 branches and pre-pandemic, in FY20, we had 2.8 million of residents visiting our branches over the course of the year. We had 4.3 million virtual visits to our website. And Baltimore County residents borrowed almost 8 million items from our 19 branches. Next slide. As I said, we do have 19 branches geographically spaced around the county. The median age of our buildings right now is about 46 years. So we have our youngest building, which is our Ellings Mills Building, which is eight years old. And our oldest building, the Riceford Town Branch, is, the library portion is 60 years old, though in fact, the central portion of that building is a historic structure that dates back to 1826. Our libraries run a huge spectrum range. Our smallest is our Lock Raven Branch, which is 2,500 square feet. And our largest is our Towson Administrative Offices Building, which comes in at 85,000 square feet. Next slide, please. Just to give you a look at some of our recent, a recent capital project that we're very proud of, our Randalls Town Branch interior renovation, which was done in 2017. That was a $1.1 million interior renovation. And it featured redesigned spaces throughout and the establishment of the COLAB, which is the Center for Technology Excellence. It's a space in which one can use a laptop, engage in virtual reality play, develop games, all sorts of things, engage in 3D printing. So it's an important space for the Randalls Town community. Next slide, please. Some other, other recent capital improvements that have been completed. Notably, as was mentioned just a few moments ago, the Hareford Branch Parking Lot Expansion, which happened last year, was completed in January of 2020, which added a new parking lot along York Road to the recently renovated branch, which provided safer access for our customers and residents to enter and exit the Hareford Library. Another recent project that I'll just highlight, in collaboration with Property Management, our Lock Raven Branch, which is our smallest branch, was part of a building-wide replacement project to replace all of the HVAC, the ceilings, the lighting. And we also replaced all the shelving in the library, and that was completed in April of 2020. We have currently three major capital projects underway for the library. The one nearest to completion is the Riceford Town Branch renovation. That's an interior and exterior renovation of a building, a portion of which, as I mentioned earlier, is historic and dates back to 1826. That's a $3.7 million renovation. 1.05 million of that money came from a Maryland State Library capital grant. And some of the features of that building, we hope, we are looking forward to be finished in June of 2021. It's about 70% complete. Next slide, please. These are just a couple of recent shots from renovation in action. We are completely gutting the building, restoring the exterior of the historic portion, renovating the interior, redesigning the spaces to allow us to have more public space, more open space, more workspace. And we are enclosing, the building had a central courtyard that was open to the elements and that was only used in the summer. We are enclosing and skylighting that courtyard so that it becomes a permanent year-round usable space for Riceford Town residents and our library customers. So we're really excited to see this building coming to completion. And we hope to have it all done this summer and to welcome people back into the building. It'll be a beautiful new facility, new furnishings, a new design. And I think the Riceford Town residents will really, really enjoy it. And we're hoping that the pandemic sort of cooperates with us so that we can actually bring people into the building in a way that I know they are anxious to do. The next slide. Our second current capital project is an interior renovation of the Catonsville Branch. That project is currently wrapping up its design phase. That's a $2.9 million renovation. 1.1 million of that money is also coming from a Maryland State Library capital grant. We are very aggressive as a library system in applying for these state capital grants. They're an important supplement to our capital funding. We compete with every other library jurisdiction in Maryland for a limited pot from the state, which is $5 million. So we are very fortunate and have been very fortunate in the past several years to have gotten over $1 million for two very important projects out of that $5 million pot. This particular renovation for Catonsville is again an entire redesign of the interior of that branch with the goal to create more open space, more workspace, more light, more visibility for everyone in the building, to reduce some of the old shelving that takes up a lot of room and blocks visibility, and to just refresh and modernize the interior finishes of the building. In addition, on the lower level of this building, we are establishing another center of excellence, which is a recording studio. And this will be the first set studio for the library. And this studio will actually be a suite of studios where anyone can come in for free and record audio, video, move things to a digital format. So we're really excited to add this to the Catonsville community, which of course has a very strong music presence, and to bring this to the residents of the county. Next slide. And the third major capital project that we are undertaking right now is the renovation of the meeting room and public restrooms at our Rosedale Branch. This is part of a larger project that we have been working with property management on for a couple of years. And we're really excited to see this branch, this branch construction begin. It just began earlier this month. It's a $400,000 project. And it is really meant to modernize our meeting room and to modernize our bathrooms, which are heavily used, as you might imagine. It's actually the first of four branches to be done. The others will be Woodlawn, White Marsh, and Pikesville. Next slide, please. Throughout all of the projects that I've just given you a very quick overview on and all of our collaborations with the Baltimore County Government and Baltimore County Property Management, all of our renovations are, we pay specific attention to sustainability in that we are always looking to create spaces that include modern and energy-efficient HVAC systems, energy-efficient lighting, both inside and outside our buildings. We are committed to using natural, recycled, PVC-free, and green fabrics for all the furnishings that go into our buildings. And on our, on the exteriors of the properties of our buildings, we are always, we are also looking to create pollinator gardens, pollinator plantings, and green spaces wherever we can. And we have a project right now where we're setting up several of those in libraries around the county this spring. Some of our immediate and future capital improvement needs for the next several years, as I mentioned earlier, we would like to continue with the project for meeting room and bathroom renovation at our Woodlawn, White Marsh, and Pikesville Branch. As was brought to the planning board a couple of years ago, the Towson Branch needs a better elevator and a more accessible elevator. If you've been to the Towson Library, you know the elevator is a little hidden away and difficult to access from the York Road entrance to the building. So we would like to be able to install a much more accessible elevator there. We do have some parking lots that are problematic that we continue to work on. Our Pikesville Branch, which has, in non-pandemic times, has dramatic parking problems due to its popularity and several other lots that need resurfacing or restructuring. The other project that I'm really excited about for the next couple of years and that we have talked with the county executives about recently is a renovation of our Lansdowne Branch, which is the branch in the southeast, excuse me, southwest part of the county. It's one of our smaller branches. It's about 5,000 square feet. It's in a building that was originally built in the 60s and then closed in 1993 and reopened as a library in 2006. It has, as one of our smallest buildings, it actually is very popular with the community and very important, a very important part of their community service. And it also has, interestingly enough, the second highest computer use per square foot of any of our branches. So it's very popular with the Lansdowne residents. This building is in need of serious renovation or if possible, replacement. And one of the things we've talked with the county executive about recently is the feasibility of, you know, whether we should proceed with a renovation or maybe consider a replacement. There is, there is a senior center in a building that's on the same property. And we have been talking a little about, you know, the possibilities of maybe a combined, a combined new facility there. As a renovation, we would expect this to be about a $3 million project. As a new building, should that be possible, we're probably looking at a $10 million project. And we will be applying for a state capital grant for the Lansdowne projects for FY23 and '24. As I said earlier, many of our buildings are getting older. And as Deb mentioned, a number of county facilities are aging. And we have a plan that we have had in place for several years based on a study that we did with HBM Architects back in 2017 to establish a priority for our building renovations and replacements. So the slide you're looking at right now just lays out our intentions for the next several years as to which branches should be renovated on what sort of timeline. The next slide. As I mentioned before, our funding for our projects comes from three particular sources. First and foremost is the County Library Capital Maintenance Fund, which is $1.9 million every two years. We supplement that with competitive grants, in particular, Maryland State Library capital grants. And we've been very successful in obtaining those. And we supplement with library fund balance whenever possible to help us achieve some of these projects. As you can imagine, 1.9 million every two years doesn't go as far as we'd like it to go when you have 19 aging buildings that are heavily used by the public. And I'm just noting here that an average library interior renovation today runs about $3 million. And an average new library building, depending on the size, can run anywhere from seven to 10 or more million dollars. So we appreciate the county's support of our capital projects. And we would love to continue to build resources so that we can renovate or replace many of our libraries in the years to come. So cognitive of time, I went through that pretty quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions and thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Cook?
Mr. Cook, I want to thank you for Randalls Town, or for Catonsville. It's a well-needed upgrade there. And the Lansdowne, I agree, it's a very small facility. And it's a large part of growth in the county. So any support we can get there, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. That's great to hear. Yeah, we are very excited about the possibility of doing something for the Lansdowne community and giving them a nicer, a nicer library building.
And James, it was a pleasure working with you to bring that great artwork onto the Towson Public Library.
Oh, thank you, Nancy. I enjoyed it so much. It was fun working with you and with the team. It was quite a great creative experience, and people love the mural. It's very popular already.
And it's gotten national attention, so I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for thinking of us. We love it. It's a wonderful addition to our building.
Mr. Cook, this is Derek Johnson. I was going to ask you about the Essex Branch. But when I saw the, I saw your budget, it's in the budget for a couple of years from now. So I want to tell you, good presentation, and I thank you for considering the Essex Branch as well.
Oh, thank you very much. Yes, it is a little further down the list for renovation, but we did, we did do a partial renovation of that branch about five years ago, which did make some, some good improvements, but we would like to do even more.
Yes, thank you.
Very popular branch and very heavily used.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, thank you again, Mr. Cook. Always a pleasure to learn about what's happening at the library. I'm sure it's been a crazy year for all of your programs.
It certainly has, but we're as popular and busy as we can be, given, given the circumstances. So thank you all very much, and thank you for your support of all of our efforts.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone who presented tonight from the various agencies. It's always useful to hear what the needs are. Reminder that the next meeting of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget will be scheduled for next Thursday, February 4th at 5:30, following our regular planning board meeting. The meeting tentatively scheduled for February 2nd, that was set as an alternative date, will be canceled. So we get a little bit of a break. Information for the upcoming meetings can be found on the Planning Board's webpage. I want to thank everyone again for attending tonight, and this meeting is hereby adjourned. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.